Call to order this evening's zoning board of appeals meeting. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance, shall we?
My pledge allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Are there any comments about the minutes from our last meeting in July 2015?
You're not holding that button, are you? Close to see.
The white one, press it down.
The bottom one.
There you go.
Oh.
Close to see, yeah.
You got it.
Sorry.
Once that's all red, you're good.
Okey dokey. Does anyone have any changes, additions, edits to the minutes from the last zoning board of appeals meeting in July? I move we accept those minutes as prepared.
I second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
So moved.
So I could give a brief background as to what's going on here with the solar application and then the applicant can give a presentation or maybe Terry will be here by then.
So Rob Stout is going to summarize the comments that he circulated this afternoon.
Thanks Jim. So I just want to give an overview as to what's going on here. I do have some questions for the applicant but for the board's benefit, this is a ground mounted solar installation that's being proposed. It seems to have been modified in some measure from the initial request last year and also from the earlier request that was submitted this summer. This board doesn't approve solar panel installations per se. The applicant will still have to get a site plan approval from the planning board and establish that all of the requirements that apply to solar installations are complied with. This board considers the use and whether or not any area setbacks or area variances are required, given the setbacks at play here. So from a use perspective, the code defines two different types of ground mounted solar systems, if you will. One is a ground mounted system, which is a solar energy system that is anchored to the ground and attached to a pole frame or similar mounting system detached from any other structure. And these ground mounted solar energy systems where the surface area of the solar panels measures less than 50% of the footprint of the primary structure are permitted as accessory structures as set forth in subsection H of this section of the code. Solar field systems, on the other hand, they're also ground mounted solar arrays but they apply to systems where the surface area of the solar panels are greater than 50% of the footprint of the primary structure. So when the application was initially filed last year, there was a large divergence between what was being proposed and the size of the primary structure. I believe the system being proposed was over 900 square feet, which was clearly in excess of the 50% threshold, which rendered the system a solar field system. Therefore, it would have needed a use variance from the board for that. The revised proposal is for a 577 square foot array. That, I did not notice on the plans, the size of the principal structure on the lot on which the solar system is going to be installed. So that's one thing that I would ask be added to the plans, just so we can confirm that that 50% threshold is met. I frankly saw some conflicting information. One of the prior engineering review letters referenced a size of 1,152 square feet for the principal structure on the lot. I pulled the tax records, I get some slightly different numbers there, so let's just nail that to make sure we don't have a use issue.
Is it the square footage of the foundation of the roof?
Can you put on a microphone, please?
Pardon?
Need to put on a microphone, please?
It's the square footage of the footprint of the primary structure.
Okay, that would be the 1152. The roof, it's bigger.
Okay. So if the engineer could just reflect on the site plans, the 1152, so we can confirm that. I think we should be okay, although 1152, 50% of that, I believe is 576 square feet, which is one foot less than the 577 that's being proposed, so there might have to be some tweaking there to make sure that you meet the code requirements if you're only a foot off at that point. The other thing I wanted to consider, you had mentioned that we were talking about briefly before, the potential to do a lot merger in the future. And to the extent that there will then be two structures on one lot, knowing which one of those would be used as the principal structure would enable us to determine which structure we should be using to key off of.
The new one.
Which is on current lot one or current lot two?
The northern lot, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So that structure, knowing what size each of the structures is, would be helpful for the board.
The other one's a 24 by 36 structure, the cabin. I'm not sure what that square footage is. I believe it's 24 by 36, not including the deck. There's a big deck. Actually, both of them have big decks.
Okay.
Those don't count, right? Decks don't count?
We'd have to get the numbers and check with code enforcement to see how they treat.
Because it's a deck on, they both have a deck and it's the length of the building and I believe 10 feet out on both.
So the 1152 for the southern lot, does that include the deck?
No.
Okay.
So if that includes the deck, it'd be substantially larger.
Even larger, right, right, okay.
So that one foot wouldn't be an issue.
Okay. So if we're to use the structure, when I'm referring to lot two, I'm referring to the southerly lot that the solar array is on. If that's going to be the principal use structure.
Do we have the, excuse me, do they have the lot line adjustment? Because right now, we didn't know this was going to be an issue. I just, in the meantime, we did a lot line adjustment. Has it been approved?
Yes. There was a lot line adjustment that was approved by the planning board in April of this year. That's different than the merger that you're talking about in the future.
The merger will just be one property. I mean, that's going to be, you guys, I don't really care if it happens, I kind of like it too. I just want to make sure that we want to build some other outbuildings on the property as well. So we'll come to that when we can. The lot line, the merger is more because I just want to have one bill. I don't like having two, a home mortgage and a home improvement loan. I was going to pay one of them off.
So when, I'm sorry, when the lot line adjustment was approved by the planning board this April, did that have the effect of moving the lot line so that the structure on the northern lot is now on the southern lot?
It made it so we can, I had a spot where I can put the array.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we'd have to go over a border, which wasn't allowed by anybody. So we just moved it so, because it didn't make any sense. My only opposite, the problem is my roofs on both structures are east-west facing.
Right.
And so if I was going to, I could put a huge amount on the cabin, but it's midday, I'm getting nothing. So it didn't make a lot of sense. I kind of wanted to put it on the cabin. Be a lot easier, because we have to redo that roof anyway eventually, but it just, they said it wouldn't be very efficient.
Right.
Get morning and afternoon.
So do you know where this current property outline is shown in yellow here?
Yeah.
If this takes into consideration the lot line adjustment that was done?
No. You have it?
I have the same plan as he does.
Somebody's got it here.
It's kind of hidden.
She has it right here. Right. Basically, that's why I want to put the array there. This is very well hidden from, I guess there was another thing, an issue with, what's it called, the scenic overlay. So there's a whole bunch of trees right here. And so they're all blocking, nobody, I mean, I'm assuming the scenic overlay is for that lookout or people on Silo Ridge. Not that, I mean, I get a little bit of their construction site all winter, so I don't know what the scenic overlay is, but as far as them seeing anything there, this is really what I'm looking for.
We're jumping ahead. I just want to make sure that, it's not clear from the application materials which lot, the solar.
This one.
So it's going to be on this one, okay. So then the size of the structure that's on this lot is the one that we want to use?
Yes.
Okay. And that, so that's not the 1152, that's the 24 by 36 structure?
This is the 24 by 36, this is the 24 by 48.
24 by 48, okay.
That's 1152. Now, if the deck's allowed and the square footage, I can go get that. I think it's 10 or 12 feet coming out and it's 48 long.
Okay. Okay, so I was thrown because the property survey that's shown on sheet 1 of 5 shows a different lot line than what's shown on the cover sheet here.
It's a square one, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we had to move it because we couldn't take the solar over a boundary.
So then what we need to know, it appears, I'm moving on from the use issue now, because I think we now know which, I now have an understanding of which structure you're using as the principal structure on the lot. So it doesn't appear, the application materials don't request a use variance and one might not be required based on this.
Okay.
As far as whether or not an area variance is needed, looking at the first page here, the plans seem to show a 15-foot setback from the rear property line. Is that still the case with the new configuration?
Yeah, we're going to need variance on that. Last meeting, I was here, I just dropped the size. I was pushing for a 44 panel and it's going to be 28 now. It's like, I don't care, it's fine, I'll go with a smaller one. There wasn't an issue with me. But with the border, I've been trying to get a hold of the owner because there's...
I'm sorry, I don't know what we're talking about anymore.
Okay.
I really don't. I thought we were talking about the 1152 house that's on one, we're not anymore? We're talking about...
So let me, I'll take a step back, because I was reviewing the maps on the first page here and it appeared like the solar array is proposed to be here. There's a principal structure here that the applicant indicated is 1,152 square feet. There's also a structure on this lot to the north here. The applicant clarified that if you turn to the second page, this property survey that shows the boundaries in red, the solar array is proposed to sit at the base of the upside down triangle. So it's part of the lot to the north.
And where is the 1152 house? I thought that was in lot one, the one to the north.
No, the 1152 is the lot to the south, sir.
The southern lot is, the 1152 is the northern lot, now the goofy looking triangle thing. It used to be kind of a Nevada looking, it's the amended lot line adjustment.
Okay.
That's where I was confused.
Okay, I was too, obviously. So the principal structure that's on the northern lot, the square footage is 1152?
1152, not including the deck.
Okay. And the size of the structure on the southern lot is?
That cabin, 24 by 36, what is that?
24 by 36 cabin, okay.
I believe, yeah, it's smaller, it's much smaller.
So in calculating whether or not we're above or below the 50%, I think it's the structure that's 1152 that's the relevant structure. We'll have to talk to the building department as to whether or not they would add the deck into that as well.
We don't even have that other structure on this.
And that was one of my comments as well, in a recent, just having the structure and the size of the structure reflected on the site plan.
Didn't the engineer do an amended proposal? You want to come over here? We want you to have one.
All right.
Judy, give me one of these.
So here, let me just, I'll check. So for the second, or I guess now the northern structure, we have it marked on the first page, there's like a little square outline. It's not to scale, we didn't do that for, we usually don't do that on our first page, it's kind of a rough design. But that's something, if you want like a more specified illustration of how it's going to look, that's something that we can accommodate on site.
Yeah, I think the building department will need that, because they'll need to determine whether or not you need a use variance based on the size of the principal structure relative to the solar installation.
Sure. Do you mind if I borrow one of your pens? Sure. I want to mark this up.
What's with a lot of the line?
So this is, this is why you do this, just so that you're scaling down the area, which is a, right?
That's July. Yep. Yep. Nope.
So that's, that was the point of this.
Okay.
So in terms of the variance, is that it's...
Can I ask a question about the other ones?
I think when we get to it, we're just, right now, Terry, we're trying to figure out the relief that they need to request from the board. And then we can get into a conversation of what they need to provide that they meet the criteria, and that's where your question will come in. So yeah, providing a revised plan that shows a scale depiction of both the size of the array as well as the size of the principal structure will allow the code enforcement officer to look at it and determine whether or not a use variance is required. And if there is, that can be incorporated into your request from this board.
Okay. We are, okay.
Separately, just having an understanding of precisely where the solar array is proposed to be will enable this board to determine what area variance relief is required from the setbacks. I started to talk about the, what I believe is, oh, the rear yard setback. It looks like the array is only proposed to be 15 feet off the property line.
Yeah, so that's one of the variances that we're here to request.
Okay. So that much is clear, that they need 35 feet of relief from the 50-foot rear yard setback To the extent that the side yard is now this northerly line here, we would want to know the distance, but it doesn't appear, looking at this, that you need a side yard setback to the north.
Okay.
I can't tell...
It's pretty far.
Yeah, yeah. But I can't tell where the solar array is relative to the diagonal.
Sure.
I gave permission to each property to kind of see it, because you'll see how hidden it is. So it's right there.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be facing this way. So you see there's a huge line of trees on this property line here. And that's why we like it there, because we don't even see it.
Right.
And the only people that could probably see this array would be that little cluster of Silo Ridge homes in the very south of the Silo Ridge property. They might be able to see it in the winter, but aside from that, these trees are getting so big that I can't see it.
So, so, understanding who will see it will be very important when the board considers the criteria of whether or not to grant an area variance. But before we get to that point, the board needs to know how much of an area variance that it's being asked to grant. And we won't be able to know that until we know exactly how far off that red line the solar array is proposed to be. Specifically, that diagonal red line.
Okay. So wait, just one clarifying point for me then.
Mm-hmm.
So the change in the property line, it went from that square that we have on the first page to the kind of diagonal that's demonstrated on the second page, okay.
Well, that's what you guys are telling us right now.
No, I understand, I'm not the primary, I'm filling in for someone tonight, so I'm just trying to get up to speed a little bit.
Okay. That's my sense from what's being described here.
Yeah.
We'll have to look at the subdivision map that was recorded following the lot line adjustment to confirm that that inverted triangle is what we're talking about.
Okay. I do have in my notes for like exact numbers, we're looking for from the eastern property line, it's a 56-foot, or no, it's an 85-foot variance for the east property line, and then a 56-foot variance from the western property line, even though it looks big. I think that's taking into account the diagonal western property line.
So this property is in the SR district, in the scenic overlay. In the SR district, on a county road, the front yard setback is 75 feet, the side yard is 30 feet, and the rear is 50. So I don't understand needing an 85-foot...
We were told 800 last time.
So the 100 only applies to the extent that the property is in a district with a minimum lot size of five acres.
Okay.
The minimum lot size in this district is one acre, so you don't have that escalator on the setbacks.
Yeah.
So if anything, you need less relief because it's...
Yeah. Okay, could you say those numbers one more time, please?
Front yard is 75, side yard is 30, and the rear yard is 50. Those are the minimum requirements.
Rear is 50, okay. Thank you.
Still...
Yeah. That's good.
So I think the one thing, there's not any question about, is that you need 35 feet of relief from the rear line. We just need to figure out what relief, if any, you need from the other lines. Then I also noticed on the application, there's, and this gets into what the board, once we define what the relief is, what the board has to consider. And there's a section D on the application where it says an area variance is requested for the following reasons. One, if the variance is granted, the applicant will have the following benefit, and there's some language about the benefit of solar and reduced cost of energy. Two, there will not be an undesirable change to the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties because, and the applicant says, the proposed action is solely for the benefit of the property owner, there are no identified detriments to the neighborhood or nearby properties. Three, the applicant cannot attain the benefit of having the variance by any other method because installation of roof-mounted solar panels will not be sufficient for the homeowner's benefit due to the size of the roof and the direction it faces. And four, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district because it is increasingly understood that the benefits of renewable energy systems drastically outweigh any detriments to the health and safety of the communities and environment of where they are installed. I think it would help the application if, once you identify exactly the setback relief that's needed beyond the 35 feet from the rear line, each of these criteria be revisited and you focus the answers and the arguments on what's the detriment of the particular area variance being requested and what's the benefit of the particular relief being requested. The relative benefits of solar are important and it's good to mention them here, but what this board is concerned about from a zoning perspective is if we reduce the setback from 50 feet to 15 feet, what detriment will that action have on nearby properties in the community?
Okay.
If any?
Yeah.
And what benefit will it have? And why can't, for example, the homeowner put the panels somewhere else on the property?
Sure.
There might be very good reasons for that.
Yeah.
It just needs to be articulated.
Lay those out, be a little more specific.
Yeah.
Courtney has this stuff. If you have, there's a new engineered plan I'm supposed to be sent over. I talked to the guy before I left. Did she mention that?
For...
There's telephone lines that are really important in this whole thing. Because she said, I talked to the guy before I left, just how long they're going to be. I'm sorry, they said they're going to be drawn in and you're supposed to be here. That's part of the whole, that's part of the whole description where these telephone lines are. I'm trying to get that part of it, but I know it's not really accessible.
Okay.
Now, take your calls, Rob.
Yeah, I feel like in our system, real quick, we have, these are the only plans that I was given.
It's supposed to be new, I talked to the guy, he said they were going to include, right here, there is, there, oh, that's right here.
See, where the power lines.
There's a huge power.
Right around here.
You can see it.
Okay.
And so it was supposed to be in the plans because there's going to be no building there anywhere like 100...
Yeah, there's nothing going to be around there in the future, anyway.
Definitely. It's nice, except suddenly giving up the plan.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
So yeah, once that's identified in the plans, I think...
That was supposed to be here. I don't know why.
Can you turn the microphone, please? Speak to the meeting here on mic, please.
Sorry, share if you need it.
So getting those arguments worked into the narrative here, because at the end of the day, if this board, well, whether the board approves or denies the application, the rationale has to be within the ambit of the four or five statutory criteria that constitute a balancing test. So the more narrative that's provided there, the easier it is for the board to make that analysis. And Terry, I think that's where your question comes in, the criteria where the applicant cannot attain the benefit of having the variance by any other method because, and you said, well, what about a generator? What about something other than a solar panel?
The first thought that came to my head was the solar panels. If that's not acceptable, what about a generator?
I've had a letting in a Generac, like, we fill them up to entertain once a week. It's a long process.
Doug, you got it on the microphone, please? There's no point in filming this, they won't speak in a microphone.
I just don't want propane, I've had it before. It's, you're always filling the tank up, especially when you have 11K in Generac. They just like mow through propane like there's no tomorrow, and that stuff's not cheap. So that's why I'm going solar.
Just for the record, the applicant's response was to Terry Metcalf's question about are there other options that could be considered other than the solar array? And that's what Mr. Broden just answered.
So I don't have any other questions. I feel like you have an understanding of what it is the board needs to advance the application.
Yeah, absolutely.
But the board might have other questions.
May I ask some questions?
Definitely.
I wanted to know if this was solely for the domestic use or if this was a step in going for some commercial use in the future. I wanted to, I don't understand how the back, how this triangle is going to be, the setbacks are going to be judged on this triangle. I mean, on one part, it could be very short, on another, it could be very long. I don't know if there's some precedent for that, but that's a confusion in my mind. I wonder if there's a problem with, on lot two, it seems like the array is in the front yard and that's why the change in the lot line was done, because I think it would not have been allowed in the front yard for lot two. I don't know if this is, it seems to me, this might be a gerrymandering to get around the rules. I'd like to know more about that.
For lot two, are you referring to the northern lot or the southern lot?
Southern lot.
Southern lot.
And then it was mentioned that the bank didn't allow the combination of the two lots. How would they allow a lot line adjustment?
Yeah, I believe we're working on that.
Yeah, they didn't care. As long, the problem was, we have two loans, a different loan on each property. So if we're going to do, blend the properties, all of a sudden, one bank, they might not do anything, but they probably would figure it out and then they're going to start fighting about who has control of this property, because really, they own it until we pay it off. So we're just going to pay off the one that's less, but not right this year.
I had another question about who is actually going to own the array. Is it the solar company or is it the applicant that owns it?
No, it's the applicant. They purchase the system and they pay back a loan.
So they have control over, not the...
Yeah.
It's two years, right? Two-year system, two-year loan.
Sorry, yeah, we, I don't have your information on it.
It's a two-year loan.
Yeah.
It coincides with the state, does the state.
Yeah, you get, you get a state tax credit that you can use to pay back towards a loan.
First year and the second year is federal.
Yeah.
And, and then I, I'd like to know more about how, how, how to judge whether this is going to be seen from other parts of the media.
Well, I gave permission last time. We talked, you and I actually talked about this to come up and see the spot. You have to come up there and see the, see where the.
I have one question.
I'd like to know the procedure for, that we're going to go through to, to make sure that this isn't going to be an eyesore for some people. That's, that's my question.
If you guys would like, we could take site photos of the residence. We have a lot already, actually. Let me see what we have on file. But that's something that we've done with other boards in the past, is we just take, you know, extensive site photos. So you can see what it looks like from the road, looks like from the north and south, and see what the neighbors would see if we did install the system.
It's my, it's my intention that once we get this, some of this paperwork cleared away and, and before we make a judgment, I would like to be able to go and come up there and see the property, see where everything is.
We guys know where it is. I mean, if somebody gives me a call, I'm there quite a bit. We have dogs. And then, then we have a dog, so he's very, and so they kind of come out the cars quite frequently, so I want to make sure that they're panned in.
I have one question. Where do you want to locate the panels? Have you figured out how long during the day the sun is actually going to hit the panels?
Yeah.
You know, because I know where you are. You're down kind of, you know, they call it the narrows, you know, wasek.
We're kind of high there. We're on a hill, so.
I know, but you're, you're facing the panels, I would believe, what, like southeast probably? Is that where you're going to get the most sun?
Due south.
Due south.
Due south, okay. So have you figured out, I mean, like, say in June, when there are days are the longest on how much sun you're going to, I mean.
Yeah.
What I'm getting at is, it's like, is it even feasible to have solar? Because sometimes solar doesn't work in places. There's this, it's like wind power. There's not enough wind, you know what I mean?
It's a complete open field. So that's why it's there. That's plenty. We have like over, I think, four hours.
Yeah, but then the sun goes over the other side towards Sylar Ridge. I know like in the winter time, it gets, it's, it gets.
In the winter time, it goes over that ridge at two o'clock.
I mean, that, that, that pertains to everybody in town that saw it, not just me.
Well, yeah, but it depends on geographically. I mean, you know, where, where the, the solar panels are, are placed.
Let's just say you have to come up and look at it, then you can understand. It's pretty, you'll see where it is. The only time we don't get good sun is first thing in the morning because we're right on, we're on the east side of the hill. Then after that, it's.
So we. Well, maybe like, maybe around this time of year, maybe like tomorrow, for instance, figure out where your panels, where you want them to be. Figure out when that's, the sun rays hits it and when it, it leaves.
They calculate an average.
Yes.
I'm sure you do studies.
Yes, we have a program that simulates the sun coverage throughout the entire year. And basically, the way that the systems are designed is that in the summer, it's designed to overproduce. Because in the winter, kind of regardless of how you position it, you're not going to get peak production. Just kind of, what you have to work with. So, over the summer, when it overproduces, you build up credits with the utility company that you can then access in the winter. And so this is, he's actually, he's got a good property for it and he's, because there's not a lot of tree coverage. There's some on the sides, but directly facing the, where the panels would be, it's pretty clear. And we ran simulations that meet his production needs.
Could you bring those simulations to the board?
Absolutely, yeah. We can go back in.
One other question, Rob. He says he, he's got two different banks, one each, owning each one of these at the present time. Does that affect when and where he can, we can do that, where the, the lot of judgment adjustment could be made?
Well, I'm gathering that the lot merger, because it's off, at some point in the future, next year.
I don't think, yeah.
Yeah, this application can't rely on what might happen in the future. So I don't think it has any bearing on this. We'll, we'll just have to judge the application based on the existing location of the lot lines.
Okay. Anyone else?
Does everybody have my phone number here? You have, you have my phone number, right? Okay. Or the email is fine. I check my emails in the morning usually. I don't check in the rest of the day. So anything coming in, I get it within 24 hours. And if somebody's coming in at a time, I'll make sure I'm there. Yeah, it's, and then Frank's coming up. They're going to be doing some property cleaning up. They're going to be doing brush hogging here in the next couple of weeks. So it should be all cleared out flat.
So ultimately, this board will have to schedule a public hearing on the application. I, I don't think we're at the point where we can schedule that public hearing yet. I think we need the information that was requested tonight to be submitted prior to the next meeting. Have it reviewed by the planning board, excuse me, zoning boards, engineer, myself. Make sure the board is aligned on its content at the next meeting and then potentially schedule the hearing.
I have, Rob, is it Rob?
Rob.
Yeah, um, did you notify your neighbors about this? I mean, of what you want to do? I mean, you know, this is being a neighbor, you know, like, hey.
I don't have any neighbors. They're across the street.
Okay.
I can't see them. Nobody can see, the only people that can see this in the winter time will be all those, the kind of mansiony houses on the very south end of Sylar Ridge. Because that old hill that they use to cover up their construction site that I get a look at for the last seven years hides them, hides my property. I can't really see Sylar Ridge. I see that hill and then the construction site on the other side of it. But I do see all the new, there's a huge building up very south and just a couple of our homes. They'll be able to see, they can see my house. Now, they will be able to see the array because you'll see the trees. When we moved the property, it was like in 15 or 16, they were smaller, but they're getting really big to where I won't be able to even see the array from my house. We just had to make that property adjustment. I didn't realize the setbacks were going to be an issue. I would have known that, we would have done something different. But, uh, now we're here with this one, with this array.
I have a question about that, actually. Is, is there something in the, in any of the town plans that neighbors within so many feet have to be notified? I mean, I know that that's been the case with me.
Oh, yeah.
I'm talking to the guy across the street. I know.
No, I'm just saying, is there, is there something codified that we can refer to? Yeah, typically before, well, when a public hearing is scheduled, neighbors within 500 feet of the lot would be notified, so. 500 feet. All right, thank you.
Of my property lines? Okay, so this is just going to be one, two, three, and then the art people, I don't think they're going to show up.
So I, I think with that, the board can adjourn this issue to the next meeting, subject to the applicant supplementing the application.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I thank you for that. Any other comments before we?
I was thinking if, if there was a site visit, I mean, as the board, I think if we can all schedule our time during the day, I think we should all go down there as a group instead of individually. I mean, but if that's possible, you know? Like 10 o'clock on Thursday or something, you know what I mean? Just, I just think that would be a better way to go. You know, we don't have to decide that now. I'm just saying, you know, like, if, if there were to be one.
Rob, Ken, am I supposed to press?
Yes.
Are we allowed to go to this as a group or do we have to go one by one?
You're allowed to go to it as a group. I would just counsel you to not discuss the application or deliberate it while you're there because all those things should happen in a public meeting. Sometimes it's easier to go individually, so you will completely avoid the ability to talk to other people about it. But if you do go together, just understand that you're, you're there to look, observe, and come back here and talk about it.
Anything else?
I have a quick question. Will this video be posted on your website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You can just go.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, then I, I guess, from what I understand, because I was late, you did the minutes beforehand. So the next thing is, I guess, to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
I motion.
I second it.
All in favor? So carry. Meeting adjourned.